Okay. It's seven oh two. And Keith, I can call the meeting to order if you don't mind if I act as the acting chairperson?
You're asking me?
Well, well, I'm a live body here, so.
Yes, absolutely. Please go.
I'll call the meeting to order of the Board of Assessment and Appeals. And present is myself, Millie Ramsey, and on Zoom is Keith Peck. And absent is Tom Hero. But with the two of us, we can in fact do this meeting. So we all set?
Okay.
We'll start that. Um, our first order of business is to accept the minutes for our September meeting.
Actually, the election of officers is very short.
Oh. Okay. We, um, you weren't here, so you can't really do that. You can't vote on these minutes because you were not at the meeting.
Correct.
So I, so I think we'll have to table the acceptance of the meeting until we have the minutes, until we have just have the motion to table. Keith, you want to make a motion to table?
I motion the table of accepting of
Yeah, approval of September thirteenth and September twentieth.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, we could do both of those. And I can second that? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's two. There's two. Um, number three on the agenda is additions or changes to the agenda. Um, I don't really have any changes to the agenda, but we might have to make a set a date for additional meeting since there's only the two of us and we can each approve them minutes. So we'll have to talk about that. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Election of officers. Keith is the newest member to the board. Would you like to be the chairperson?
I would not. Thank you very much. I'd like to get my, dip my toes in the water first.
There you go. That's always a good thing. Keith, do you have any nominations that you would like to make for the chairperson?
I would like to nominate Brittany Robert for the chairperson.
Brittany Robert is not a member.
Oh, oh, who? I'm, I'm sorry. Your name is, I, I was looking at the
My name is Millie Ramsey.
Millie Ramsey, sorry.
And we have Tom Hero. And you know what they say about if you don't show up at the meeting, we'll get elected as the chairperson? But if you have, if you have a motion, enter, we will entertain it, sir.
Yes, I, I, uh, put on the floor to elect Millie Ramsey as chairman.
Do we have a second? I guess it has to be me. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, then. When our minutes were approved, and so now we're actually ready to start the hearing process. Um, we have one, two, we have five appeals. Uh, there's one, two, at least three people who are present, maybe that's yeah, there's only three, and they do have to be here in order for us to hear their appeal. So we'll get started with who we have here and before we go any further, I think I do this oath for the two of you and the gentleman on the screen, this here representing who?
American Towers. Good evening.
Good evening.
American Towers, can you hear me?
Maybe something up there isn't turned on.
No voice.
Could it be on? Hold on.
See, I come up there, the stuff of the volume, the little speaker. Right down.
Can you get him out of here?
Right, right there.
So, well, yeah, that's up. You're up.
Can you hear me now?
Usually I'm too loud. We can't hear you.
You can't hear me? One second. You can hear me now? I thought I heard myself. Okay, alright.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you Keith.
Yes, I represent American Towers.
Okay.
Hello? Yes?
How you doing? My name is Kerry Salvin. I'm a real estate praiser with American Eagle. Do you have a moment?
I don't. I'm in the middle of a Zoom meeting.
Not a problem. I'll get back to you.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, so we have three of the five people here. So I have an oath for the people who are here. Oh, one more. And you are who, please? I'm Millie Ramsey, Chairperson of Board of Appeals.
Can't hear it.
Hold on.
This is Mohammed Kurejo.
For Moonbeam LLC.
Is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
And it looks like the only person, and there's Brittany. She just showed up. Brittany Robert. Robert, Brittany. Her name is Brittany Robert. Brittany is her first name. Hi, Brittany.
Hello.
Okay, good. We're all here. Um, so if all of you together, we are going to ask you to do an oath, and I'll read the oath. It says, "Do you solemnly and sincerely affirm and declare that the evidence you shall give concerning this appeal shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?"
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. We'll start with Mr. Monaghan. Would you like to tell us about your appeal?
Yes. The appeal is for the assessment on my Jeep.
Okay.
I do have the bill of sales there.
Good, I thought you brought them.
And that was, uh, never disputed at all from the state. They took their money and never came back and said, uh, no, we can't accept it. So I guess that's totally legal.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh,
And
if I usually have the little one that you get from the motor vehicle, something like that, they bring that out.
And for Keith on Zoom, um, he did submit a bill of sales for the vehicle for a total of twenty-four hundred dollars. For his 2012 Jeep Liberty. And his estimate of the value of the car is two thousand dollars as opposed to the net value from the assessors is five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So my understanding is if we go to the blue book, so to speak.
Participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue.
For a 2012
We're proceeding now. There are four participants in the meeting.
It's gonna be the back end of the month, too. That's where you got the quote from.
Right.
But that's in I don't know where you get that quote from, uh, the blue book or something like that?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm looking at right here. Something that Mary gave us.
The bill of sales, too. It's two, two hundred and sixty thousand, and I got two hundred and seventy on it now.
Right.
About a mile of it. And so the, the vehicle I have to have, uh, the whole top end of the rebuilt, about sixteen hundred dollars. I have a bill for that, too. And then of course now, the transmission is going on. And the law. So there's no way that that's worth five thousand dollars.
Uh, no, probably not. Um, I'm seeing that if the value in the blue book is sixty-four hundred dollars and we deduct the number in the book for mileage, which is four, seven, fifty, we come up with sixteen fifty, one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
For the net worth of it.
For the net worth of your car.
It's about, about right, right around there for sure.
Right.
I mean, it still runs, but it's not very traded.
Right. So your estimate was two thousand?
Yep.
In year, subtracting correctly?
That's what I actually paid for.
It's just, that's what you paid for it? Keith, any thoughts on this? Uh-oh, maybe he, he needs to be back up. We can't hear him. We can't hear him again. We'll call you, Keith. Sorry. No, it's a team.
The paper should be
Hi, Keith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay.
That's the phone.
Were you able to hear me?
Yeah, I'm hearing you through the computer, but yes.
Okay. Well, we do have Mr. Monaghan's bill of sale where he paid twenty-four hundred for the car, for the Jeep Liberty, a 2012 Jeep Liberty. And he bought that in twenty-two.
And, and your math there? You, you did some math? I just caught a little bit of that. You were subtracting?
I am. The market value of this book, of this car, I'm trying to look for them. The mileage deduction is definitely a factor, and it's six thousand four hundred. We can subtract six thousand four hundred dollars. What I'm having trouble with is finding the fair market value of the car in the papers that Mary gave us. Because these are all the same.
Now, if you have a bill of sales, how could it not be that you base it on?
Right.
That's the, I don't understand.
Let me call her as well. Let's call and ask her. Because in here all I'm seeing is mileage terms.
Well, what does it say in, in the, the actual words as to the referment of a, a bill of sale?
Well, your bill of sale is green.
Hi.
Hi, Mary. It's Mary Kay. Millie has a question for you. Good. Millie just has a question for you. Very quick question for you. Where is the fair market value of Mr. Monaghan's car? Is it what? Is it what you have on the motor vehicle record for the town of Columbia where you list value?
Take that number. The, the definite is gonna be on that card. Take that number, divide it by seventy percent. That's market value.
So his value that you have on here is five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So we're gonna take seventy percent of that.
Five seventy percent cover the market value.
We can reduce the percentage. We don't have a simple calculator here. That's all right. I could use my phone. So we're gonna take the five, one, six, zero. And we're gonna multiply that times seventy percent, divide it by, yep, point seven?
Seventy percent. Yep.
Five point seven zero equals. So that comes out to be seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. So that's that's the fair market value of his car. Is that what you're telling me? That's what motor?
Motor vehicle says.
That's what motor vehicle says. So then when we subtract the sixty-four hundred dollars that's in the mileage table for his car, that's gonna give us the grand total of nine seven one.
Nine hundred seventy dollars?
Nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Yep.
Okay. Alright. So it's less than what he said?
Yes, it is less than what he said. Every single page you yeah, every single page you gave me a sixty-four mileage. Wait a second. Mary, your first page that you, the mileage table for 2012, you circled sixty-four hundred, but on the next page, there is the mileage, which is only forty-seven fifty. So should we be subtracting forty-seven fifty?
It should, there shouldn't be two mileage pages together. There's, there's to be whatever car.
No, why? The three mileage pages I have are all for the twelve twelve Liberty V six. They're identical.
There's three copies. Those are three copies for each of you. There's one for each of you.
Okay. Alright, so that's it. And there are the, and that one, the mileage says four, seven, fifty. That's what we're gonna deduct.
Four, seven, fifty, what?
Okay.
Seven, three, seven, one. Mileage is four, seven, fifty. Then after we get that, we can deduct for condition.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, when we deduct for mileage, it's twenty-six, twenty-one. So we could deduct another six hundred dollars for condition that it's not drivable. And we would end up agreeing with your estimate of two thousand dollars.
Oh?
Yes.
Yes. Keith, did you, were you able to follow that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion that we reduce?
I'm not connected to audio anymore.
Actually, we can hear you.
Oh, you can? Oh, okay.
We can hear you.
Alright, oh, yeah. So I, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the two thousand dollar reduced estimate for Mr. William Monahan's, uh, 2012 Jeep Liberty.
Where?
Sounds good. All seconded in? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're all set. You will receive something in writing within seven days.
Okay.
Affirming this decision.
Now.
Thank you.
Here is my second.
Mary, we'll call you back if we need anything.
I have a name, though, because of last year.
Mary?
From May and June.
We'll call you back if we need anything else.
May and June, almost now, we
Alright.
Going on two years, Pat, if you think about that. And the first one, you charged me the same things you charged me here.
We can't go backwards, I'm sorry.
Well, then, I, I think that's the fact, that you're going against a bill of sales or what the state of Connecticut agreed upon on the sale of the car.
But you would have had to appeal that during
I was incapacitated at the time.
Which I am sorry to hear.
Well, yeah, but it is, it's an excuse when somebody, it, it, it has a broken neck and it doesn't go out.
Yes, but unfortunately, by state statute, we can only make adjustments for the current issue.
You know, I just wanna leave this country so bad. So tired of bullshit. It, it really is. If you do it for one year, what would be the difference of not doing it next year and stuff like that? Because it's a thing amounts. Actually, it's a little bit less this year because it devaluates every year and stuff like that. But I'm not gonna argue anything like that. But the thing of it is, you charged me full amount of seven thousand, seven thousand dollars instead of that for a vehicle that was five thousand dollars more.
And I can understand that.
Yes, well, then I wanna put another appeal in that I want
We can mention to Mary, but my understanding is we can only address appeals that are made during the current tax year.
And made that, made that law.
The state of Connecticut. So if you'd like to, you will let us
Back, I can make copies of them. It's the only one to have. And I went through hell trying to find these. This, this and this.
You have this.
Yes.
You have this.
Yes.
And you have this.
Yes.
This is ours. All set?
Yeah. How did you get that one?
Thank you.
How did you ever get that one?
You didn't. That's a copy of your application.
Oh, okay.
All set?
Yeah, I'm not too happy about it, but yeah.
Thank you.
I just don't, you know, fair is fair. You know, and I'm, I paid a lot of taxes in my days and stuff like that. Not only won't you people make it a week here, I pay the taxes and stuff. And, and, and my working days. And it's like, here I am, seven years old, I'm living in a place that is government-sentenced, you know, like that. And I gotta fight town hall here for something that I had a bill of sales for. Same, it was paying for it and this, but no, they have to go by Blue Book or something like that. That, that that is unfair. It really is. It's not fair. It's not being unfair. It's being totally ridiculous. They're saying, oh, you know, we have the power, so we can go right to the book and do this because we have the power to do it.
Well, they have to use uniform rules for everybody that they assess. So that's why they go to those folks, I'm sure.
What about the fact that I'm too old and, and, and they weren't gonna put me in front of a jury and stuff like that because I'm kinda senile because I'm old? Biden got away with it. Come on.
Thank you for your appeal and you'll
Alright, so they'll be coming in there.
They will.
Couple of days and stuff. And then I'll go to the, uh, office and see if I can make payments.
There you go.
Okay. Then we'll get this cleared up.
Sounds good.
But I am moving on the country because I've had
Okay. Thank you. Okay, second on our list is Moonbeam LLC. Would you like to present your information and documentation, please?
Yes, we bought this property and we run the business about a month and a half after that, too. We're not able to run the business. And since that, we paying everything from our pockets. And we put on sales, uh, since we closed the business, but still, we couldn't find any customer, too. So we appeal to give us a little relief in the tax because everything we paying right now from the pocket, we are since three, four, five years.
And so the property is on the market
It's correct.
For sale, correct? And it's been on, it's been on the market for about five months so far?
Five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
Oh, I have, I have, the information I have is that it's been on the market for a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for a hundred and fifty-four days.
No, no, we changed the real estate agents he put on his website, but before that, you know, the Bob Realty before he was our realtor. So we put in the market, market that price, but we willing to sell less than that, but we couldn't find the customer.
Right. But you're still at this point trying to sell it for a hundred and ninety-five thousand?
We can post a sale in one fifty-two if we find good for a customer. I'm in a customer, but so far we didn't get any offer.
Right. And your estimate of value is a hundred and fifty thousand?
In my opinion, it's, uh, no choice because we want to get less to sell it. That's right.
And were there, um, you did send some pictures. Did you have to do any, um, renovations or replacements of anything in the building?
Before we opened it, opened the business, we did some, uh, my put new air conditions, like, uh, new some equipment. It was a restaurant and, uh, floor, floor work on the parking lot. Well, as we make the front path to get in. So some kind of the renovation. But when we start the business,
Okay.
trying not to close, so we can do anything.
Right. How about kitchen? Did you need to do any renovations in the kitchen of the restaurant or anything?
Uh, we changed the equipment, but we didn't do any major, uh, renovation.
Okay.
Yeah. We changed some equipment, hoodwork like that, but, uh, basically same.
Okay. Keith, any questions?
Uh, can, you can still hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the, the market, uh, has spoken, I think. The market's saying that it's not worth a hundred and ninety-five thousand right now. So your estimate of one hundred and fifty thousand seems reasonable, uh, in, in that regard.
And I would agree with that. Um, so again, Keith, do you mind making a motion? If you think we should make a motion to lower the value to one hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, I make a motion that we reduce the, the valuation to the suggested hundred fifty thousand for uh, Moonbeam LLC's property at twenty-eight Aspen Place. Uh, no, that's your address, I'm sorry.
No, that's his address. The property is one fifty-six Route sixty-six East.
At one fifty-six Route sixty-six East.
And I'll second down. And all in favor?
Aye.
All set? None? I think we're good.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate for, uh, consideration of my request.
Confirming it within the next seven days.
Thank you. Thank you, all of yous.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, American Tower Corporation. Hi.
Yes.
Would you like to share with us?
Yes, yes. Um, this is for a cell tower that is located on, uh, thirty-three Route sixty-six. Um, the assessing department, can you hear me very, can you hear me very well?
Yes.
I wanna make sure. Okay. The assessing department has the cell tower being assessed. The assessing department has the cell tower being assessed based on the amount of tenants that are, um, that are, that are located on the tower. Um, they have four tenants by the assessors, but American Tower, as of October first of twenty twenty-three, only has three tenants on the site. What I wanna do, if you don't mind, is, uh, I don't know if I sent you the information, but can I share it real quick on the screen, if that's okay?
Sure.
What I'm showing you, what I'm looking at here?
That's great.
Uh, can you see the record card on the screen? Oh, hold on.
No, but we do, oh, there you go.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and, uh, we have a copy of that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. So on the, on the bottom of the the record card in the comment section, it's showing you how the assessor is, um, deriving their value based on the income for the cell tower.
Right.
They have four tenants, and so on page uh, page four on, on, on the thing, we have always, it shows we have three towers, three tenants at this, at this tower site.
Mm-hmm.
And based on the income, based on their approach to value, uh, we have three arrays at the tenant lease of twenty-five hundred, gives the annual ninety thousand, with the vacancy and expenses of ten percent, the net operating income is eighty-one thousand. Uh, the assessor has a cap rate of ten percent. Um, so with that, the cell site value is eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so we request, uh, based on the amount of arrays on the tower and using the assessor's valuation method, um, to bring the value down to eight hundred and ten thousand dollars from one million to ninety, ninety-three thousand.
Yes, and we have all of that information, and it seems very reasonable, since you only have three and we assessed you for four. Keith, any input?
No, I agree.
Okay. Shall you make another motion? You're busy tonight, Keith.
Yes. We're jumping right in here. So I make a motion that we accept the appellate, uh, appellate's estimate of a hundred, uh, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, American Tower Corporation, at P O Box seven two three five nine seven, Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, I guess that's it.
The property located at three thirty Route sixty-six?
Uh. Correct, yes, trying to see that.
We could end that. All second that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All set? Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you two. The Moonbeam's all set. American Towers all set. Brittany Robert is right here. Okay. Brittany, what would you like to tell us?
Um, to be very honest, I have no clue. Um, I, I just got a letter saying that I'm supposed to be here, and I really don't know why.
Well, if I think I can explain to you perhaps why, um, it's for personal property. Um, you didn't, you didn't file for personal property associated with your detailed cleaning solutions business. So.
Um, I did move out of the town, um, I filled out the bottom portion, I thought that was all I had to do, apparently not.
Right.
So, I'm not sure what to do.
We do have that, your twenty twenty-three declaration of per- personal property, you did sign all of that. So you do not, in fact, have any assets that are taxable in Columbia. And did not have taxable assets. Would you agree, Keith?
Yes, it appears so.
So it appears that what we need to do on our end is if everything gets reduced to zero, then there is no twenty-five percent penalty, because twenty-five percent of zero is zero. So you should be all set. We'll have the town assessor close the file.
Okay.
And you, you're moved, and we have this information. And if she needs anything other than what you already signed, we'll let you know when we send you the letter stating our decision.
And, and Millie, we don't, we don't require a motion for that, that, because it was already on a form?
I think we should still make a motion, Keith, to close the file.
Right, so, uh, making a motion that we close the file uh, on, on Brittany Robert, Detailed Cleaning Solutions, formerly at Strickland Road, Columbia, Connecticut, as, uh, she closed the business and sent in a, uh, closure form, the appropriate form.
Business termination.
I just wanna clarify, I did not close the business, I just.
You just moved it?
Yes, just moved, yes.
Yeah, out of town.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Glad you appeared.
Thank you. Have a good night, thank you.
You too. Okay. Laura, Laura, Laura.
I actually think we have most of the information, but they don't let me do that. We don't want this piece, that said we can't move the truck.
Okay, Trevor Motor Vehicle. One thing I believe you did not do for us on here, um, was the appellate's estimate of value? You need to give.
How much I think it cost?
You need to give us some sort of value now.
The truck?
Yeah. We can't supply that for you. Now, let's see what she wants, which one she wants to do.
What did my husband say it was worth?
In here, what did he say it was worth, metal scrap?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, so this is the original, so you wanna put the.
Put it on the original?
Yes. You got it, okay. Oh, and I did put the VIN number on the original, yeehaw.
Yeah, you did.
Only the plow is worth something. Yeah, I got, hold on, show them.
So Keith, the, um, estimated value that they put on it is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Two thousand three Dodge Ram, they've canceled the registration plate. Mary told me that there, um, are no no mileage for this year. Period of ve- of vehicle, so there's no mileage to, to tell. So.
Because the truck doesn't, we, we can't, like, there's a broken frame on it.
Right, so the town is valuing it at three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
That's what the plow in front of it is.
Okay. This bit, I wanna mix it up with yours. This is the original, she wrote up the. This is the issue, then, this is her, okay?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, good. So I'm looking at this what Mary circled or highlighted for us, and when I say Mary, I mean the assessor.
Yes, yes.
Just to, just to be clear, she circled sixty-five twenty-five. So if we do our math again, and we take their value of three five seven zero, divide that by seventy percent, that equals five thousand one hundred dollars.
Eek. So what the focus was?
That's what they're saying. But then if we deduct the six five two five, it's under here for ninety-five thousand miles.
Ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah, this goes between ninety-five and a hundred thousand. So if we deduct that amount of six thousand five hundred and twenty-five, we owe you money.
That's what I'm saying, that's a negative number, isn't it?
That's a negative number, that's right, that we owe you money. So, what do we do with that?
Just take the tax and make it zero.
Six.
Me and my husband would be happy if you paid no tax.
Just verify that number for me. It's a good one.
It's a two-five, yeah, it's horrible.
So that comes out to be a negative number.
Excellent.
So, Keith, what do you think?
Yes, that sounds like something that should be thrown out.
That we, that we should just value it at?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Uh, if that's possible, do we have to value it at a dollar or something, or could we value it at?
The tax is zero? I mean, that it, you pay no taxes?
No, I think we have to have some sort of value, it has to have some sort of value.
The plow in the front of it literally has value.
Well.
But if I take the plow off the front, then like I can separate the
Yes.
plow from it, so, yes. I'm sorry, so I have some doubt.
I, I would suggest, uh, you know, you know, a hundred dollars, because again, e- e- even a junk place, like, you know, buying a hundred dollars worth of value in it.
Right.
Well, yeah, I, 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 my value of it was two hundred and fifty if I brought it to a scrapyard.
Right, so we'll, we'll give you a discount off of that.
Okay, and value it at a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars?
Sure, I could agree with a hundred.
Okay, so I'm making a motion that we reduce, uh, Keith and Laura Tarkowski's two thousand three Dodge Ram, uh, to a value of a hundred dollars. The Tarkowskis living at three twenty-five Route sixty-six, Columbia, Connecticut, oh six two three seven.
And what does that do to the tax?
That's what I was just wanting, you might have to call Mary and ask Mary on this, because I think we have to, we have to give the value of the truck at a hundred dollars, and then she would figure out what the tax.
And then she would calculate it.
She would calculate the tax based on the value of a hundred dollars.
Correct, which, which I don't know, should reduce the tax regarding.
Oh, yes.
Oh, absolutely.
It'll, it will absolutely reduce.
I'm satisfied with that.
Your tax bill, okay. Then that's what it will be. We're reducing the value of your, the assessment on your car to one hundred dollars.
Did you second that?
Keith motion. I will second that, yes. And that's it? That's it, wow, thank you.
There was.
Thank you for coming in.
Oh, all in favor of that motion? Aye. We're good. Mary will send you something within seven days.
Thank you.
Thank you, do you wanna have this back, or shall we keep this?
No, you can have to keep that, because I made like four copies of it.
So you have to visit the tax assessor with your canceled registration and um, they need two forms of ID. Maybe, or two forms of.
So they need, the assessor needs a copy of?
She needs a copy of that you've taken it off the.
Oh, so she needs a copy of this?
She does. Okay.
I can provide that to her.
Yeah.
I'll provide it to her.
Okay. Usually they want, when people are asking to have a vehicle taken off the tax roll, well, you're not taking yours off.
No, we're just reducing.
We're just reducing.
We're just introducing it.
Okay, so when it goes to the metal scrapyard, then you can bring
Yeah.
this no registration and whatever you get from the scrapyard, and then
Yes.
it'll be gone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have a good night. Yeah, you can lose your meaning too.
Yes, I think we can. That's the end. Now, Keith, I honestly don't know what the, um, rules are about these minutes. We mean, it would be a shame to have to have a meeting just to approve the minutes from, and it has to be um, Tom and myself.
Yes, I can, I believe I can postpone them to the next meeting, which would be September.
Oh, great. Then what we have to do is, we don't have to reset anything for March, so our work is done as of now. But what we do need to do is set a date for our September meeting.
Oh, actually, you already said it.
Where is it?
It was, yeah, your original.
Oh, the original.
Yeah, so you're all set for them. I walked outside and these were on the sidewalk.
Uh-huh.
And I have a feeling that they were the, yeah, man that was here. And he, if he needs his glasses, he will not be happy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you.
It didn't land on their lenses either, telling them they didn't like it.
Okay, okay.
I think you very.
Okay, so then we have a meeting set, and Mary will tell us when it is. It's, it's, I can, you know, maybe I have a schedule, okay? It is September?
September eleventh.
Oh, good. September eleventh is our next meeting. Twenty twenty-four. So I think we're good, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make said motion that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Keith, for appearing, so we could do.